Mayor Tombs.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, we'd like to do the Pledge Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Did you send that to me? Was there any? Was there any up there? Hang on.
Technology.
Technology, um, yes, I did. All I gotta do is open. All right. Apologize for a little delay here, we got public comment. And first up is Jeffrey. Jeff?
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Rice. I live at thirty-five fifteen Seventeenth Street, Rock Island. Have lived there since nineteen ninety-nine, so this is twenty years. And I have a reason for coming down here tonight was to talk to you about a dangerous traffic situation on Seventeenth Street, especially northbound. From Twenty-second Avenue that empties out onto Seventeenth Street, and then you have a gentle curve that goes all the way up to Thirty-first Avenue and beyond. We live right where that gentle curve is, and so do other residents. There's a dangerous situation because people are not driving correctly as the street was set up to begin, to begin with. People drive in the right-hand lane at excessive rates of speed. They don't pay any attention to the signs that the city has put up. They're inadequate. The paint stripping on the street has all faded. And I trust that you will believe me that I'm not here to exaggerate. If any of you want to come down and stand in my driveway, I don't expect you to, but if any of you want to come down and stand in my driveway, you will see for yourselves how dangerous this is because even on slow weekend days, people drive in the wrong lane. They're looking at their cellphones, they're not paying attention, and they're driving too damn fast. And this is our dilemma, and we've had way too many close calls. Walking our dog. Other people walk their dogs, other people ride their bicycles, other people are just out for leisurely walks heading northbound on Seventeenth Street, and there is a disaster waiting to happen. And I ask you with all due respect that what's happening right now isn't working. And I would respectfully request that different paint on the streets that would direct people into the center lane and stop driving on the right-hand lane because that's what they're doing. And that's my comment for tonight, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
All right. Next up is Julian. Is it Julian? Okay.
My apologies, she was representing MDA. She wanted to speak on the agenda topic tonight, but she's running late, so my apologies for that.
No, no problem. You didn't look like a Jillian. All right. Is there anybody else? I don't know. Is this Jillian? You're up, perfect timing.
Sorry about that.
No, you're fine. It worked.
Yes, if Gianna wants to come up here, as well, I have a guest with me, so this'll work out perfect. Um, well, I'm Jillian, I'm with the Muscular Dystrophy Association, and really, we just wanted to come up tonight and thank you all for how supportive you guys have always been, the Rock Island Fire Department filling the boot for MDA, and to tell you a little bit about what we do. I wanted to introduce Gianna because she's one of the families in the area that is actually helped by the efforts of filling the boot. So, what does MDA do? So, we are the leading nonprofit health agency dedicated to finding treatments and cures for Duchenne muscular dystrophy, ALS, and over forty other neuromuscular diseases that we cover. Because of the Rock Island Fire Department's help, we're able to provide services to over a hundred and fifty families in Rock Island and Scott Counties, since it's kind of that whole Quad Cities area. MDA focuses on a variety of things, but our two main focuses are innovations in care and innovations in science. We do that by focusing on providing a camp for summer kids, for kids ages eight to six seventeen, at Camp Courageous in Monticello. Gianna gets to go to camp every summer. Because of that, we also focus on providing care centers for kids and adults at the University of Iowa hospitals and clinics. But we're actually really unique in what we do in that we actually have an outreach clinic here in the Quad Cities so that our families that are in this area don't have to travel to receive care, they can receive care here locally. We also do a loan closet. A lot of our kiddos need equipment that is very expensive and sometimes not covered by insurance. So what we do is any equipment that's donated to MDA, we donate it back out to families in need, whether that's a power chair, a manual chair, hospital bed, whatever that looks like. We take care of delivering it to them if there's any repairs that they need, that sort of thing, we do all that. Then we also focus on research. Without the firefighters doing fill the boot, the years of research that we've been able to do that have led to eight groundbreaking drugs being approved by the FDA in the last three years would not have happened. The most notable is for one called spinal muscular atrophy. There's been two treatments approved in the last three years for this, but the most groundbreaking one was approved a couple of months ago. Children that are diagnosed with this disease typically don't live past the age of two years old when they're first diagnosed because it has such compromising effects on their respiratory system. The treatment that was just approved is a gene therapy. It's a one-time dosage that's administered, and they actually end up showing no signs of having the disease at all. So a child that went from the, having your, the parents being told, "Your child may not live past their second birthday, they'll probably never walk, they'll never sit up on their own", they now are saying, "You know what? We have a treatment, we can administer it, your child's gonna walk, they're gonna hit all those milestones." So without the firefighters going on and filling the boot, and without the support that you guys give to them to do that, MDA would not be able to make those things happen. Last year alone, Rock Island raised twenty thousand dollars filling the boot between their street collection and their golf tournament. They're one of the leaders as far as fill-the-boot collections go. And so, I wanted to bring Gianna because she is one of our area families that directly benefits, so I don't know if you want to tell them a little bit about camp really fast?
Fine.
Hi. I'm Gianna, and I would like to thank you for raising money because it gets to send kids like me to MDA summer camp, which is really awesome. I get to go every summer, and we get to do so many cool activities, like zip lining, and camping, and canoeing, and tree climbing. And it's really cool because even if you're in a wheelchair, or if you can't walk or anything, you can still do anything you want to do. So, I want to thank you for all that you do and for raising money so that I can go there and so other kids can.
Gianna's been going to camp for how many summers now?
Six.
And Gianna actually used to be the state ambassador and would travel all over the state sharing her story about MDA. And like I said, it wouldn't be possible for Gianna to have the opportunities that she has without your guys' support. It means a lot to us, you know, seeing you guys support them. I know some of you have come out to their golf tournament and different things like that, and I know it means a lot to them as firefighters that you guys do that as well. And just to give you a little background on fill-the-boot, this year's actually the sixty-fifth anniversary of the program, and firefighters in sixty-five years have raised six hundred and fifty million for MDA. They're MDA's longest-standing sponsor and partner, and that means a lot to us, and so we are just so grateful for all that they do. Justin, who is the one in charge of their fill-the-boot, he comes out to camp every year that he can, brings a bunch of guys out so that they can see what their dollars are doing. If you ever want to go, you can talk to Justin, and I'm sure he'd love to bring you along, but we'd love to have you see the dollars at work that you guys allow to be raised by just supporting that effort. So, thank you, I don't know if anyone has any questions, but yeah.
Thank you very much for sharing that story, and also thank you very much to the Rock Island Fire Department with their work with the MDA, so thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
And it's no small feat to come up and talk to city council. You're a future leader, we need to plug you in somewhere in the council to what we're doing as a government.
Gianna's wonderful, and she also is a great writer, so I should have had her bring her poem that she wrote, but I didn't ask her to do that, but in the future, maybe we can do that.
Very good, thank you very much. You know, there's nobody else signed up, but I am gonna take just a few minutes, a little selfish for a little public comment. My family has joined here in the council for the first time since I've taken office, actually. The two years I've been here, and they just now are showing up, so they're a little slow, so I'm gonna embarrass them. But my wife and two of my daughters, but I'm gonna brag, one just had a new child two months ago, right there. Natalie. And they live in the Baltimore area. And came in town to show off their new child, along with celebrating the wedding of my other daughter, which is gonna be this wedding, which this council approved the noise amplification for last week, so they're all here. And I don't know how many of my grandchildren are here, there's three, I don't, I think we're missing a couple. I've got eight grandchildren, and most are here except for, I think, two are missing. Ten grandchildren, that's right, ten, we got Avery and, see? My future son-in-law is here also, of course, and his two children, Avery and Dean, so. But, so I'll have ten grandchildren here come shortly, so getting quite a bit houseful, but it's great around the holidays and spending. So, thank you for letting me indulge this moment, but I just wanted to recognize them and embarrass them, it's the first time. My daughter's been here when they were talking about chickens, but other than that, so, thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
All right. We now have item number six.
Minutes of the July twenty-second, two thousand nineteen meeting.
Who do approve the minutes as printed?
Who's the second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Carries. Item seven, update. I have a couple items, we got Park Community Cleanup Days. Grab your work gloves and join us at your local park for these special cleanup days. Bring a friend or a group to help pull weeds, lay mulch, pick up trash, sticks. Service opportunities will differ based on location and season. Please contact Nikki at three oh nine seven three two seven two eight zero if you're bringing a large group or any other questions. It's August seventeenth at Longview Park from nine to eleven. Thursday night groove concert. Get your groove on with the Fantastic Five at Shreve Park, sponsored by the Arc of the Quad Cities and Rock Island Happy Joes, on August twenty-second at six PM. Begins the concession including grilled items. Happy Joe's Pizza and Bent River Brewing Company. Then at six thirty PM, dance lessons will begin, and that will follow by the concert from seven to nine. Admission is free, so come one, come all, and enjoy. Then we got movies in the park. Incredible Two. Bring your family and enjoy watching the Incredibles Two movie at Martin Luther King Park on Friday, August twenty-third. Cash concessions available for purchase at seven PM. Movie begins at dusk, seven forty-five, presented in conjunction with the Martin Luther King Center. And then lastly, Floatzilla. River Action has got their big Floatzilla kayaks this Saturday, August seventeenth. The count will be around one o'clock, it kicks off at one, the count will be shortly after that. They've been trying for several years to break the world record of kayaks out there, kayaks and canoes, actually, non-motorized vehicles. I've actually helped participate in this for a number of years. If, for information, you can go to riveraction.org/floatzilla. But that's this Saturday down at Sunset Park in Lake Potter. Around one o'clock, the festivities kick off, it's a lot of fun. It's great to see all the different costumes and how many people can be down there and enjoy. I know the city attorney, Dave Morrison's, is going to be there participating, along with myself, and I'll be down there for a little while, so please come and enjoy. Item number eight.
Announcement of the two thousand nineteen Rock Island Citizen of the Year Award nominees and winners.
All right. Got a few presentations here.
Okay. The Rock Island Citizen of the Year Awards have been given annually since nineteen eighty-seven by the mayor and city council. These awards showcase outstanding people who often go unrecognized in our community. The selection committee consists of the award recipients from the prior year, a member of the Labor Day Parade Advisory Board, and the city clerk. It's chaired by two current aldermen, myself and Dylan Parker this year. Together, the committee members interviewed the nominees who accepted their nomination and then selected the recipients. This was a very difficult choice to make as we interviewed many outstanding people. Rock Island is truly honored to be home to so many amazing people who do so much for others. Today, the nominees will be recognized and presented with a certificate, and you'll come up and get your photo taken with the mayor as a group, and then after the photo, we will announce who the award recipient is for each category. At the August twenty-sixth council meeting, we will hold a reception starting at six fifteen for award recipients, with the award presentation immediately following at the start of the council meeting. We ask that when your name is called, you come up to the front to receive your certificate of recognition, and after all the nominees have been announced, pictures will be taken with the mayor. So the nominees in the business category are Under the Ginkgo Tree Nature School, Diane Gano; Quad City Coffee and Pancake House, Jose and Sarah Zapata; Miller Container, now known as Liberty Packaging; they must all be busy doing things tonight; and Cool Beans, Annette Hudo. Okay. Well, since there are no pictures to be taken, the two thousand nineteen Rock Island Business Citizen of the Year is Cool Beans, Annette Hudo. The nominees in the education category are Andrea Perer; Jennifer Paige Pearson; and Linda Dothard.
Come on in.
Come on in.
Oh, you wanna get in the middle?
Whatever works for you. Yes, we can. Thank you very much.
And, hold on. The two thousand nineteen Rock Island Education Citizen of the Year is Andrea Perer. Nominees in the individual category are Tom Sparkman.
He's here.
He's here. Vicky Hess and Denny Anderson; Don Mavis; and Heidi Huskamp Collins. And the two thousand nineteen Rock Island Individual Citizen of the Year Award is Heidi Huskamp Collins. The nominees in the professional category are Rob McCoy; Sarah Stevens; Natalie Linville-Mass; And the two thousand nineteen Rock Island Professional Citizen of the Year is Sarah Stevens. And we are actually presenting Sarah's award tonight as she is unable to be here on August twenty-sixth for the award ceremony due to a professional commitment. And presenting the award is Ray Lind. And I would like to say that the person presenting the award is the person who won last year. So last year, Ray was the Professional Citizen of the Year.
When your national pa, natural passion and professional life culminate into one, there's no better recipe for success. At every turn, Sarah Stevens has taken a hard look at her path, and it could not have worked out better for Rock Island and the entire Quad Cities. She is the Executive Director of Lead Her, whose mission is to connect women with experienced leaders to fuel their career and community engagement. In three short years, Lead Her has grown from ground zero to connecting over three hundred mentees with a mentor. Her impact on the empowerment of women in this community is unmatched. If you have ever had a conversation with her, you'll know what we're talking about. In addition to Lead Her, Sarah is a founder of the Beautiful Pro, The Beautiful Project, which is a platform for women to share their journey to success and well-being. This endeavor led her to be featured on TED, which gives people an opportunity to give short talks and are featured in ideas we're sharing. We thank Sarah for her kind heart, for her service to her community, and could not be happier to present her with the two thousand nineteen Rock Island Professional Citizen of the Year Award.
Okay. The nominees in the city employee category are Rock Island Parks and Recreation Department; Jeff Van Heisen; Carlos Ybanez. And the two thousand nineteen Rock Island City Employee Citizen of the Year is Jeff Van Huisen. Nominees in the organization category are the Arc of the Quad Cities; Friends of Douglas Park; and Christian Care. The two thousand nineteen Rock Island Organization Citizen of the Year is Christian Care. Nominees in the youth category, Anna Darrow. And although Anna was the only nominee in the youth category, the committee was so impressed with her service record to the community, there was no doubt she would have been chosen to receive the award regardless. She was really amazing, too, I mean, I was blown away by her. Anna is leaving soon to go to Boston College and won't be here on August twenty-sixth, so we are presenting Anna with her award tonight. And Jada Vissi, the two thousand eighteen youth award recipient, will present her award.
Sometimes you see resumes, and sometimes you marvel at them. If you were, if you were to go through every award, community service activity, or school activity on Anna Darrow's resume, you would see why she's an easy choice for Citizen of the Year in the youth category. She is a recent graduate of Alamon High School, and one, and the top line of her resume reads as follows. She is a top-ten scholar, principal's list recipient, John O'Callahan Scholar recipient, and a member of the National Honor Society. She has received the Top Academic Excellence Award from every department, an IHSA All-Academic Athlete, a Michigan Tech University Women in Computer Science Youth Program Scholar, and a Junior Rotarian, and an Illinois State Scholar. Anna also volunteers at least ten hours of community service each week between the Christian Service Volunteers and the Trinity Volanteen Program. And she planned for the arrival of a refugee family of ten from the Congo through the World Relief Committee at St. Pius. She also has four part-time jobs through various times of the year. Her achievements go on, but we believe you can see how deserving she is. For everything Anna contributes to her school, community, athletic programs, and life in general, it is our pleasure to present her with the two thousand nineteen Rock Island Youth Citizen of the Year Award.
See, I told you she would have won anyhow. In the honorary category, we did not have any nominees this year in the honorary category, but there was a nominee who deserves not just, who serves not just Rock Island, but the greater Quad Cities area. The committee felt they were deserving of receiving the Honorary Rock Island Citizen of the Year Award. That organization is the Arc of the Quad Cities. The Committee's Choice Award. There was another nominee who has been nominated for several years. The accomplishment of this nominee are in a category by themselves for what the nominee has accomplished for Rock Island and is unmatched in the community. This is a new award that we gave this year. The Committee's Choice Rock Island Citizen of the Year Award goes to Friends of Douglas Park. And as I said earlier, the remainder of the two thousand nineteen Citizen of the Year Awards will be presented on Monday, August twenty-sixth, at the council meeting. At that time, the overall winner, who will be the grand marshal of the parade, will be announced, and the Labor Day Parade is September the second. There'll be a reception prior to the council meeting at six fifteen here in council chambers. There'll be a reception prior to the council meeting at 6:15 here in Council Chambers. You are all invited, and the committee thanks those who took the time to submit nominees, the nominees who attended, and the committee who helped select them. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the committee and their hard work and due diligence. They made some changes this year, and I think it was wonderful. All right. We're at item number nine.
A special ordinance removing a handicap parking space at 1212 Ninth Street.
Move to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Spagettis.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Five eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item number 10.
Claims. There are 12 of them, and I have to read all of them. And then the motion will be, motion whether or not to accept the reports and authorize payment as recommended for claims items A through L. A. Report from the Human Resources Department regarding payment in the amount of $14,372.70 to David Morrison of Rock Island, Illinois for legal services rendered from June 28th, 2019 through July 31st, 2019. B. Report from the Human Resources Department regarding payment in the amount of $9,975 to QC General for a general liability claim. C. Report from the Human Resources Department regarding payment in the amount of $4,849.60 to Esurance for a general liability claim. D. Report from the Human Resources Department regarding payment in the amount of $16,502.50 to Julia Ware for a general liability claim. E. Report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number two in the amount of $87,165 to Sterling Commercial Roofing of Sterling, Illinois for the raw water pumping facility roof replacement project for services provided from May 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2019. F. Reports from the Public Works Department regarding payment in the amount of $45,450 to Xylem Dewatering Solutions Incorporated of Chicago, Illinois for the rental of pumps used from May 8th, 2019 through July 2nd, 2019 during the flood along the Mississippi River. G. Report from the Public Works Department regarding payment in the amount of $11,260.47 to Davenport Electric Contracting Company of Davenport, Iowa for the emergency replacement of the southeast traffic signal at 17th Street and First Avenue. H. Report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number three and final in the amount of $112,580 to Putnam County Painting Incorporated of Mark, Illinois for the Ridgewood Water Tower Rehabilitation Project for services provided from July 1st, 2019 through July 19th, 2019. I. Report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number three in the amount of $60,570 to Sterling Commercial Roofing of Sterling, Illinois for the raw water pumping facility roof replacement project for services provided from July 1st, 2019 through July 30th, 2019. J. Report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number one in the amount of $55,679.34 to Centennial Contractors of the Quad Cities Incorporated of Moline, Illinois for the 2019 Brick Street Repair Program for services provided from July 5th, 2019 through June 28th, 2019. K. Report from the Public Works Department regarding payment in the amount of $21,770.69 to Miller Trucking and Excavating of Silvis, Illinois for an emergency sanitary sewer repair at 2701 Carlberg Court. And L. Report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number 22 in the amount of $1,139,292 to Civil Constructors Incorporated of East Moline, Illinois for the water filtration facility project for services provided from June 21st, 2019 through July 8th, 2019.
Motion to accept the reports and authorize payment as recommended for claims A through L.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? It was, who's second, Randy or?
Randy.
Yeah, Randy. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Spagettis.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Five eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item number 11.
Claims for the weeks of July 19th through two- July 19th, 2019 through July 25th, 2019 in the amount of $689,885.71, July 26th, 2019 through August 1st, 2019 in the amount of $428,335.98, and August 2nd, 2019 through August 8th, 2019 in the amount of $798,399.76, and payroll for the weeks of July 15th, 2019 through July 28th, 2019 in the amount of $1,517,709.1.
Move to allow the claims and the payroll.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Spagettis.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Five eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item number 12.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding bids for the CDBG-funded sidewalk repair project, recommending the bid be awarded to Centennial Contractors of the Quad Cities Incorporated of Moline, Illinois in the amount of $160,000.
Motion to award the bid as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Spagettis.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Five eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 13.
Report from the Police Department regarding a one-year renewal of the contract with Community Home Partners for supplemental police services expiring on September 30th, 2020.
Move to authorize the renewal of the contract as recommended?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Spagettis.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Five eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 14.
Report from the Police Department regarding a memorandum of understanding with Rock Island County and the City of Moline for the 2019 Justice Assistance Grant.
Motion to approve the memorandum of understanding as recommended and authorize the mayor, city clerk, and city attorney to sign the agreement.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Spagettis.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Five eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 15.
Report from the Finance Department regarding the municipal compliance reports for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2018 for the Police Pension Fund and the Fire Pension Fund.
Move to accept the reports as recommended?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
I will need to abstain.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Spagettis.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Four eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 16.
Report from the Fire Department regarding a request from the Rock Island Firefighters Association, IAFF Local 26, to utilize the intersection of 30th Street and 18th Avenue for their annual muscular dystrophy association fill-the-boot fundraising campaign on Friday, August 30th, 2019 from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m., on Saturday, August 31st, 2019 from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and on Sunday, September 1st, 2019 from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
Move to approve the request as recommended.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
We'll have a brand-new 18th Avenue to do their lining up with, so.
That's it.
They don't have to worry about any potholes.
Roll call, please. Nope, nope. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Curious. Item 14, or 17. Jeez. Item 17.
Report from the Martin Luther King Center regarding activity applications and street closing and sound amplification applications for their 32nd Annual King Center Family Fun Day Celebration to be held on Saturday, August 24th, 2019 with the request that food vendor inspection fees and the sound amplification permit fee be waived.
Motion to approve the parade and the event, street closing, and sound amplification requests, and waiver of fees as recommended.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Spagettis.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Five eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 18.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding an amendment to the development agreement with Green Thumb Industries Incorporated for the construction of a new facility at 8221 51st Street.
Move to approve the amended terms as recommended. Direct staff to work with legal counsel to draft an amendment to the development agreement and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
What's the amendment? Do you explain to us, at least to people watching at home?
It's act- go ahead.
Isn't it just the size?
It's the size. We can talk about it.
Because we celebrated GTI's expansion, and I think people would like to know what this amendment's about.
Um, the original agreement that we signed last year, I believe, with GTI, dealt with the expansion, Phase 2, of their facility, additional 60,000 square feet, bringing another 100-plus jobs to Rock Island. However, this, uh, this project grew from $8 million to $17 million. And so, we're saying, you're making one heck of a large investment in Rock Island. We want to invest back in you and make sure that we are playing our part and being a good group here to, you know, to play with. They've done well. Uh, they're very good to work with. We've had some great meetings. And I believe in the future, this will lead to bigger things with this company.
So the amendment is?
Amendment is for maximum, I believe it was another two years, or $60,000.
What's the current reimbursement? Was it five years, 10 years?
Five, I believe.
I believe so.
I think it's five years.
It'll be for seven years then of a reimbursement.
Correct, or whichever comes first.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. It's a great project, great jobs, high-paying jobs, too, scientists, et cetera. They're moving some of the operations from the Chicagoland area down here. Roll call, please.
Alderman Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Spagettis.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Five eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 18.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding the proposed sale of city-owned property at 708 710 12th Street, parcel 092243, to Horacio Marquez for customer parking and building access for the property Mr. Marquez owns at 712th Street.
Motion to sell the property as recommended and authorize staff to draft a purchase agreement with a sale price for future council action.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Spagettis.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Five eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 20.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department and the Public Works Departments regarding a request from the YWCA for assistance from the City of Rock Island for the disconnect of sewer and water services at the YWCA's newly purchased property at 1704 Fifth Avenue.
Motion to approve the request as recommended and instruct CED and public works staff to complete the water and sewer service disconnect.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
I'll be abstaining from this vote.
I just have a quick question. I wonder if, uh, somebody can tell me roughly how many hours, uh, labor that is to do that, just an estimate.
It can vary on the water and sewer disconnect, depending on underground issues, but we're looking at probably 12 hours per each. So, it's about 10, about $10,000 approximately.
How many thousand?
10,000.
Thank you.
Okay. Now the discussion. Roll call, please.
Alderman Pulis.
Aye.
Hurt. Spagettis.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Four eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 21.
Report from the Traffic Engineering Committee regarding a request for the installation of a handicap parking space at 2203 16th Street.
Move to approve the request as recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Pulis.
Yes.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Spagettis.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Five eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 22.
Report from the Traffic Engineering Committee regarding a request from Aaron Schultz for the installation of four-way stop signs on 23rd Street at its intersection with Sixth Avenue.
Move to approve the request as recommended?
Second.
And, uh, yeah, yeah, and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Sorry, James. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
I just wanted to note that, um, I think this is Dylan's award, but he's not here this evening. I did drive by and take a look at the intersection and noted that there was a petition from the neighbors, um, requesting there was about maybe 10 people on there. Is anybody here from the neighborhood? No, okay.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Spagettis.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Five eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 23.
Report from the mayor regarding the reappointment of Dawn Wolford-Matallo and Jody Cook and the appointment of Eric Hanson and Amber Williams to the Arts Advisory Committee.
Move to approve the reappointments and appointments as recommended.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Curious. Item 24.
Report from the mayor regarding the reappointment of Wanda Lambert, Sue McDevitt, and Jane Shappett to the Beautification Commission.
Move to approve the reappointments as recommended.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Curious. Item 25.
Report from the city clerk regarding a request from Kavanaugh's Hilltop Tavern for outdoor entertainment with sound amplification and the outdoor sale and consumption of alcohol on their landing slash deck on Wednesdays and Thursdays until 9:00 p.m., on Fridays and Saturdays until 11:00 p.m., and on Sundays until 9:00 p.m. for 2019.
Motion to approve the request as recommended, subject to complying with all liquor license regulations and subject to being shut down early if complaints are received.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
I have a question. Have they contacted residents, or are they waiting to contact them until?
Well, with Kavanaugh's, they usually, once they bring their request, then they usually go around and contact.
Okay.
He's aware of that requirement.
Okay, good.
It's a liquor license establishment requirement, so the process is a little different.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark. Oh, I'm sorry, Hurt.
Yes.
Spagettis.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Five eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 26.
Report from the city clerk regarding a request from Kavanaugh's Hilltop Tavern for outdoor entertainment with sound amplification and the outdoor sale and consumption of alcohol in the fenced-in portion of their parking lot on Saturday, August 24th, 2019, from noon to 11:00 p.m. for their first Blues Brews and Barbecue Fest at 1228 30th Street.
Move to approve the request as recommended, subject to complying with all liquor license regulations and subject to being shut down early if complaints are received.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Spagettis.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Five eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 27.
Report from the city clerk regarding a request from the Rock Island County NAACP for a street closing of 9th Street between 6th Avenue and 7th Avenue with sound amplification on Saturday, September 7th, 2019, from noon to 4:00 p.m. for the NAACP Community Day Celebration and Resource Fair Celebration and Resource Fair to be held at the Martin Luther King Jr. Community Center at 639th Street.
Move to approve the request as recommended.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Spagatus.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Five ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 28.
Report from the city clerk regarding a request from Matt Stofan for a street closing of 22nd Street between 16th Avenue and 17th Avenue on Sunday, September 22nd, 2019, from noon to 7:00 p.m. for the annual Highland Park Block Party.
Move to approve the request as recommended.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Spagatus.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Five ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 29. Other business. Is there anybody in the public? I don't think, nobody signed up, so I don't think there's anybody out there. Counsel.
We wish our fellow counsel, alderperson Dylan Parker, a happy birthday today.
Yes. And Ivory Clark, a speedy recovery, and hopefully things work well with Ivory. And Mark, I think you have some good news.
Yes, I would congratulate one of our local, our only local waterski team, Backwater Gamblers. They placed fifth at the national tournament this last weekend, and one of their members may have set a new world record for one of the performances that he did.
Is that right?
And that'll be, that has yet to be approved by the national committee. But right now, it looks like he has set a world record.
For?
Backwards waterskiing in a circle, believe it or not.[1655.33][1655.33][laughing]
I had to ask.
Six times, 42 miles an hour around the waterski jump.
Was it on purpose?
Phenomenal, as it was. Very phenomenal.
Do we still hold, at one time, they had the largest pyramid or whatever.
That is now being held by a group of teams where they had, I think it was six four-tier pyramids side by side, pulled by one boat.
Okay.
So, it was pretty phenomenal. And unfortunately, this year, nature dealt us a pretty strong hit, so the Backwater Gamblers has had a hard time, you know, getting back on their feet, if you will.
Mm-hmm.
But I would invite everybody to come down on the remaining Sunday and Wednesday evenings at 6:30 for the time that we do have left.
There you go. Any other comments for the good of the cause? If not, item number 30.
Executive Session. 5 ILCS 120 Section 2 C6, the setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the public body. 5 ILCS 120 Section 2 C11, litigation when an action against, affecting, or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting. And 5 ILCS 120 Section 2 C21, discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed under this act, whether for purposes of approval by the body of the minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by Section 2.06.
Motion to go to executive session for the exceptions cited.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on that? Roll call.
Alderman Pulis.